Here with us tonight, I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Macon-Bibb County Commission for September the eighteenth of two thousand and eighteen. As is our custom and practice, we start every meeting with an invocation and the pledge of allegiance to the prayer. Would you please stand as you are able for the invocation and pledge of allegiance? And I'll call on Reverend Ike Mack from Unionville Baptist Church. Come to the podium, and we've got two four-eight students that'll lead us in the pledge. So, please stand for invocation and pledge.
Eternal, all-wise, everlasting, die-rot God, we thank you for this moment, this time, this period in our lives. We ask that you would invoke your presence upon this meeting. We pray, God, that you would be the leader, and that, most importantly, that you would touch each of us individually, but don't forget about us collectively. We realize, God, that this is a time where prayer is certainly needed, because prayer is simply our speech to you, our God. On behalf of those that are affected by Hurricane Florence, we pray, God, that you touch each and every one of them, touch the families that have lost relatives in this catastrophic occurrence, and we pray, God, that you would, some way or another, allow mercy to be felt at a time like this. I ask that we also, God, continue to honor you because of your prevailing mercy, for we realize that which has happened elsewhere could have happened here in Macon, but because of your kindness, because of your warmth, because of your love, you saw fit to have mercy upon us here in Macon and Bibb County, and for that, this evening, we are eternally grateful. We ask now that you would touch each commissioner, that they might be able to recognize, realize, and then be able to evaluate and assess situations that affect all constituencies and citizens of this city and this county. We need you, God, to lead them, touch their hearts, touch their minds, and allow them, God, to look broadly and not more tunnel vision. We pray, God, just now, that each and every one that's assembling together to be a participant and a witness of this meeting, that they come with the spirit of unity, that we realize because unity is what is needed. We ask, God, that you would now, please, look on the city of Macon, the county of Bibb. We, God, feel the need to ask of you to please, if you would, speak to our hearts and our minds, that crime might be reduced, senseless murders might cease, and more importantly, that all men and women would be able to realize that we all belong to you. Have your way just now. We're thankful, God, because we realize that even in the midst of this, things could be worse. So, for that, we give you praise. We give you honor, and we give you glory. Whatever is on the agenda tonight, we pray that you would be given preeminence in it all, and that decisions might be made that would be beneficial and helpful for the ongoing movement, advancement of this Macon-Bibb. I pray now that you would allow your presence to be felt throughout this meeting, that we will know without a doubt that you are here, and that you are really the one that is in charge. We ask that you would hear my prayer, but we also ask that you would hear others as they pray. In the precious, powerful, prolific, prudent name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Would you please join us in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance?
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Be seated. Pastor Mack, thank you so much for being with us tonight. Pastor Mack is a native of, I saw it here a minute ago, Cochrane, Georgia, Blackley County. Is that right? Is that right? Good, good, good. And he has been the lead pastor there at Unionville Missionary Baptist Church since nineteen eighty-six? My, my. My, my. That's a lot of history there. You have been a stabilizing influence in that part of town, and you have presided over marvelous growth of the church and spiritual renewal. We are indebted to you, Dr. Mack, for all that you continue to do for this community, and thank you for being here with us tonight. Our four-eight students that led us in the pledge of allegiance, if you would, please stand while I read a little bit about you. They, first is Jemaya Talbot. And Jemaya, did I pronounce your name correctly? Jemaya Talbot. Jemaya was recognized for high honor roll, all A's, and was a Duke TIP recipient in the seventh-grade talent identification program last spring. She's also joined the junior beta club at First Presbyterian Day School, FPD, and is currently a member of the FPD volleyball team, cross-country, and track team, participates in FPD fine arts program by performing in various school play performances, as well as participating in the school concert band as a flutist. Hot dog. She also participates in robotics team, and Jemaya was selected as the junior four-eight Girl of the Year as this year's four-eight awards day program. And we thank you very, very much, Jemaya, for being here with us. And next is Jayden Talbot. Jayden? There you are. Jayden is currently a member of FPD cross-country team and chess club. Now, put those two together. Got the cross-country team going and the chess, and the chess club as well. He was selected to participate with the Orphe Ensemble Music Group called The Treble Makers. Treble Makers last year's group. He attended Sky Camp at Middle Georgia State University to learn more about aviation. Other activities include participating in competing with the Chess Empowerment Association of Middle Georgia, taking karate classes, and service at Bethany Explorer Pathfinder Club. Jayden, thank you for being here. In this day and age when we hear so much bad about our youth and all this, isn't it refreshing and great to see two such outstanding young people? Thank you very much for being here with us tonight. We, we really appreciate it. Next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes and the pre-commission meeting of September the fourth and the regular commission meeting of September the fourth. Those minutes have been prepared and distributed ahead of time. Are there any changes correct? Got a motion by Commissioner Lucas to approve the minutes as prepared. Second by Commissioner Schlesinger, further discussion, hearing none, all in favor of the approval of those two sets of minutes. Signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the minutes, those two sets of minutes are approved. Next, we've got some invited guests. We are always delighted to kind of show off our own employees who are oftentimes recognized, well, let me back up, who oftentimes go unrecognized for all that they do for us on a day-in, day-out basis. Every now and then, however, they will be recognized, and we think it is altogether fitting and appropriate that we share that recognition with you. And let me start off with Marvin Land. Marvin, who is going to come up and introduce several of our award winners, says, I understand it, Marvin, and if I'm telling you something that you didn't know ahead of time, I'll give you a hint, once you get up there and talk about awards from the American Public Works Association. Marvin?
Good afternoon. I'm with the Middle Georgia branch of the APWA, state of Georgia, American Public Works Association. Each year, the state gives awards out, individual awards, for recipients whose win above and beyond. This year, we are honored to have three that actually work for Macon-Bibb, and I'm gonna call them out one at a time if y'all come up. The first one for two thousand and eighteen, Community Involvement Award, is Parks and Beautification Director Sam Kitchens. Our second recipient is Emergency Management Manager of the Year Spencer Hawkins. And our third is Public Works Supervisor of the Year from Public Works, Senior Operations Manager Tim Wilder. Congratulations, guys, it's an honor working side by side with you.
Thank you very much. That is absolutely wonderful, and congratulations to each and every one of you. Let me call on Carol Kelly. Carol is at the four-eight extension service and has got the pleasure of introducing a Riles Rising Star Award winner. Carol?
I did not realize I was doing the introduction. I apologize for my attire tonight to all of you. I am very pleased to introduce my coworker, Ms. Carrie Maitling. I'll ask Carrie to come on up. Carrie was awarded the Riles Rising Star Award in Cooperative Extension. She was selected from one hundred and fifty-nine peers across the state. She is one of the top young leaders as a four-eight agent in extension, and I'm so proud that she's here in Bibb County, leading our youth. So, congratulations, Carrie.
Next, let me call on Jeff Griffin and Joe Nabham to come up and talk to us about some of the IT award winners, information technology. Joe and Jeff, thank you very much for being here. We're excited.
This award is a best practices award we received from Jimis International. That's the government management information systems. And this started off as a project, but now it's a program, and many of the people that are in the audience are part of this program. So, I'd like for you to stand up to be recognized. This is actually, this is actually a collaborative effort between over twenty Macon-Bibb departments and six central Georgia organizations. This is a collaborative effort that is for information sharing. It's a system of, it's a system of insight, it's a system of record, and, yeah, community engagement. Thank you.
Way to go, Joe.
I have my assistant there.
Help him out.
So, this is a program that we started about two years ago. We quickly outgrew our conference room over there at the terminal station. We've moved over to the Middle Georgia Regional Commission. We're busting at the seams. We've got all these departments that are helping us out, and it would not be possible without the leadership and vision of our CIO Brett Lavender. He is, he is actually learning about government innovation as we speak. We want to thank him. Would not be possible without all these departments and organizations, and certainly wouldn't be possible without the expertise and the knowledge of Joe Nabham. So, thank you very much.
Good. Joe, thank you. Congratulations to you. We appreciate it. Finally, let me call on Chris Flohr to make an award for excellence for the county information office.
Thank you. This was the first year we submitted to the National Association of County Information Officers. They're both kind of in the graphic design appeal, but we did earn two of them. What's impressive about this is more than just the graphic design, it's the process that went into developing and distribution, distributing them, and the impact we saw from them. So, we won two awards, as you can see there on the screen. The one on the left, we won it for the infographic we created after Tropical Storm Irma, to help people put their debris piles on the street. This was a couple hours of meetings with the crews and with Solid Waste to determine how they needed those debris piles. And hearing back from the crews, the debris pile went quickly from their perspective because they were able to get in there and get it picked up as efficiently as possible. So, they credited some of the distribution of this through local press, through social media, through email blast, and through public presentations. The one on the right, we've undertaken a graphic identity project where we took the county-approved seal and its elements from back when we consolidated in two thousand and fourteen, and gave our departments their own visual identity that was also aligned with what the commission said they wanted to communicate to the public. This requires meetings with the departments to determine the services they provide and what they're trying to communicate with the public. We submitted these four, because these are the four we developed in two thousand and seventeen. Top left, you see Parks and Beautification. You have Solid Waste top right, Facilities Management bottom left, and Bound and Call, of course, on the bottom right. This goes along with about nine or ten others that we've developed over time. So, I want to call forth my public affairs team, because it wasn't just about graphic design, it's about collection and distribution. So, if they'll join me down here real quick.
Who's gonna run the camera while I lay down here?
We're gonna leave the graphic up. Oh, they won't strain. Sometimes I just do as I'm told. This is Denise Mercer. She runs our customer service division and handles C Click Fix, so they help with the distribution of the information. Of course, the hundreds and hundreds of calls we got about debris collection, and she helped. Shan, of course, assisted with that and getting the information out. Rachel helps with the social media and the direct communication, the media relations side. So, congratulations.
Congratulations. Woo-hoo! Thank you all, and congratulations again. We are indebted to you for helping get the word out as to how to get storm debris cleaned up and for helping design and put together logos for our different departments. That's fantastic. Next item on our agenda is public comments on agenda items that are things we're going to vote on momentarily, and this is your opportunity to talk about some of that so that we hear your comments before we vote. The first is Dr. Lindsay Holiday, who wants to talk to us about the garbage contract. Dr. Holiday, thank you very much for being here. You're recognized for up to five minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. When this business comes up, if y'all agree to table it, I will agree to volunteer my time for the next month to get us, attempt to get us a better deal. I've gone over this contract three or four or five times, and it's either written very confusedly. Well, yes, it definitely is written confusedly. If someone educated can't understand this contract, as short as it is, and it ought to be very plain, when it talks about the contractor purchasing carts, contractor saying how much the price was paid, and if the county is unable to pay for the carts, there's a lot of confusion like that. Who's paying for these new carts? Who's paying for the old carts? It's very confusing. And as I've told you before, you know, these garbage contracts are a problem all over the I noticed that we're gonna be paying twelve dollars for pickup a month, and the citizen's gonna be paying thirty dollars a month to the city. So, the city's making a pretty good deal on this, eighteen dollars a month per garbage can. Multiply that by fifty thousand garbage cans in the county, it's a lot of money, and we really ought to have a better handle on it than this contract as it's written. I'm not gonna go over all the details that are confusing, but this is our fourth amendment with this group. So, we, you know, we keep redoing the contract. So, I think they'd understand if you wanted to wait another couple of weeks and let the citizens look at it more closely. And like I said, I'm volunteering to step in to the fray here. I know it would take some time, because, you know, I'm gonna pick it apart if y'all let me. So, again, for me to do that, you will need to table it today. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Holiday. Appreciate you being here. Appreciate your comments. Next, Mr. Willie Fraser, who wants to talk to us about the Little Richard Pennerman House. Thank you for being here, Mr. Fraser. You're recognized for up to five minutes, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioner, and individual people that's here today. I read in your resolution, there's a resolution on Part B here, that says, "A resolution to authorize," excuse my sorry, let me go back, "the mayor and inteminal agreement related to Macon-Bibb lease out the Little Richard Pennerman House to the Bibb County Enhancement Authority. I stand for Pleasant Hill and its historic district on every turn, and I wanted to give my idea of what I think about the Little Richard Pennerman House. Nice house, nicely built. I appreciate this city commission for what they did and what they are doing with that house, but I feel that the Little Richard Pennerman House, as well as everything else in Pleasant Hill, need to remain a part of that community's involvement. I heard somebody say, "Well, you know, put volunteers in and different stuff like that." By sitting over there now with, you know, not even a recourse of who's gonna own it, run it, keep it going, and stuff like that, we, as the individual people who live, reside, and love Pleasant Hill, will be glad to have it, own it, take care of it, see about it, and all of the rest of it, as well as everything else that's in Pleasant Hill. I continue to say that, you know, we intend to want the Booker T Washington Center, the State Open, the Art Jones Center, all of these are historic places in Pleasant Hill. Lynwood Cemetery, all these things mean a lot to us, and it behooves me that all of these individuals that built this stuff and did this stuff now don't know what to do with it. Had it never been touched, we had a resource center, because that's what the Booker T Washington Center was. Instead of all of the monies that we placed into these things, we should have took that money and kept that center going, because it was large enough, it was family-oriented, it had a pool, it had a community center, and it had everything that that individual area needed. Mr. Shetard, great man, made sure that it was for everybody, and we, as the people in Pleasant Hill, we want to continue to make sure that all of those things that's in Pleasant Hill is for Pleasant Hill. So, what I stand here and say today is not even just about people of color. You know, we want to give power back to the people, and the people live in Pleasant Hill. I intend to do everything that I can to give power back to the people, the individual people of this city. Black people, white people, Indians, Mexicans, all people, we're giving power back to the people because they deserve everything that's over there in their hood, and we're gonna see about them, and I hope that you will too. I respect all of you, I love all of you, and I appreciate all of you. Please, let's do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fraser. Appreciate you being here. Next, Mr. George Mohammed, also wants to talk to us about the Little Richard House. Mr. Mohammed, thank you for being here. You're recognized for up to five minutes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Peace and blessings, well wishes, and respect to the mayor, county commissioners. I've given you a letter regarding our current status of affairs in Macon-Bibb County. The loss of population and poverty are two of the major issues that are bringing us down. Along with that is economic opportunity and jobs. We have a new authority that was established with consolidation, the Community Enhancement Authority, and it is directly focused on eradicating poverty, which has been very clear that Macon-Bibb County has an incredibly serious problem with poverty that I don't see anybody really dealing with. Now, you have a state representative that's building houses, providing jobs for people who live in Pleasant Hill, which is another issue, as well as bringing hope to an area that's threatened to be gentrified. I see a lot of white supremacy and a lot of racism and bigotry and hypocrisy in this community. I get sick and tired of you talking about how much you respect Little Richard, how much you love Little Richard. Little Richard has put this community on the map worldwide, but yet you strain at a nap to support a house, his house, that will bring tourism to this community, that will help in the revitalization of Pleasant Hill, is very clear. And just because it's a black man that happens to have an authority, you have several other authorities that have been lily-white in this community for a long time. There's money flowing, there's no accountability, and you make all this big deal about Representative Beverly doing good work over there in Pleasant Hill, and I'm just tired of the hypocrisy. A lot of you are, you have black residents in your districts. They're just asleep, and they're not voting. But if you're not gonna represent the people, you're always talking about the taxpayer. We are taxpayers. I'm a taxpayer. You act like we're not taxpayers. What taxpayers are you talking to? We want this house restored and maintained, not with some penny-anty way with little volunteers, people that may or may not show up on a given day. We want this properly administered, and we want it to be a beautiful place, that people will come off this new interstate and come right into Pleasant Hill and see the historic grandeur of Pleasant Hill. And we don't want it gentrified. We don't want it whitewashed. I'm just speaking straight words, and I just get tired of this community. This community is dying. Macon-Bibb County is down because there's so many people that are so worried and afraid of the rise of black people. We all rise when we all join hands together and do the best for each other. Stop being scared of that, because it's coming, whether you like it or not. It's coming. And we got people coming from Savannah to Atlanta. What is your plan for bringing in the resources or the advantages of that money into this community? What plan do you have for fixing consolidation? How you limped and promised all this to these people, and then come in here with this sorry situation, can't find millions and millions of dollars, all these problems we have in this community? What is your plan? I haven't seen it, but I have to tell you one thing, we need to abide by your word, by your word. Where's your character? By your word, you owe that house to be administered, and it should be administered, by the Community Enhancement Authority, which is doing a good job. Tell me what you're doing in the community to help poverty. Show me. Show me what you're doing. Show me what job you're creating. I don't see it. So, you have, and you also, in consolidation, you agreed for a small business office to be in place to nurture black contractors up out of this abject disparity that's going on. One percent, five percent of hundreds of millions of dollars, just racist. It's ridiculous, and you know you're doing it. I want to see it different. And the next mayor, we gotta do better with our mayor. We have gone back thirteen, fourteen years, we've gone down, and the children don't deserve it. That's why they're shooting up everything, because they look at leaders that don't care about them and don't care about our community and letting the community die. You can look at me any kind of way, I don't care how you look at me. I really don't. I'm telling you the truth, and you know I'm telling you the truth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mohammed. Your time has expired, but we appreciate your comments. Next, I'm gonna add somebody that got here just a minute or two late but wanted to speak, and that's Mr. Peter Givens, and I'm gonna follow that up with Representative James Beverly. Mr. Givens, I think you want to talk to us about the Little Richard House, I believe. You're recognized for up to five minutes, sir, and thank you very much for being here.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I see that we're back here again. It's been a, you can't hear me?
Well, if you get, real close here. Yeah, there you go. Thank you, thank you.
Good, very good. We're back here again. This started back in two thousand and four, when we started the Pleasant Hill Neighborhood Improvement Group, 501(c)(3), and we decided to deal with mitigation plan for Pleasant Hill, to try and do what we could to rebuild this neighborhood that I was born into and raised in. Today, we have success. We have the parks, we have the, we're about to have the Pleasant Hill Heritage Trail squared away. We have the Little Richard House, and it's sitting there waiting for something to happen, and nothing is happening so far. We've discussed this over and over again. The commission, and you yourself, Mr. Mayor, made a commitment to the community, and we discussed this at length, and you said then that there was a tight budget, but you were going to approve this, and you did. And we're asking that you stand by your commitment to everyone, to everyone involved in this process. We've come a long way since two thousand and four, and now that we're ready to strike out and bloom, you snatch the rug out from under us. That's not good. This is indicative of what happens to black communities all over this country, and we don't like that, and we're sick and tired of that, and we will do something about it. This is not a threat. This is not a threat. I didn't come to threaten anyone, but I want everyone to know that I don't take things lying down. So I ask you to honor your commitment fully. Let's not talk about separating everybody because divide and conquer is not gonna happen here. We want it the way we started off with it, and we want that now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Givens. Uh, finally, Representative James Beverly. Dr. Beverly, thank you very much for being here, sir. You were recognized up to five minutes, and we appreciate your efforts.
Thanks. Y'all forgive my appearance. If you haven't seen me in about a month, I grew this beard, I was, uh, I took my daughter to school with my kids, and I've been gone, and, uh, I'm just trying to decompress a little bit, but I find myself right in the midst of this, and so I wanted to come down and, and spend some time. I was actually over in Pleasant Hill, we, we're at the, the, the final throes of these houses, and I can't wait to have a press conference for y'all to come over and see them. What we did is nothing short of spectacular, it's amazing. I'm not talking about the successes that we have, 'cause that's, that's gonna speak for itself, and I think that Brother Muhammad and Mr. Givens certainly have spoken to what we're trying to do over there, uh, and, and so I won't belabor that point. But let's talk about this contract and why it's so important and how I got involved, uh, and why the Community Enhancement Authority thought it was important to terminate the contract, given the fact that it wasn't funded. So every section of that contract was worked out through the community, every section. Section two, where there's a management fee, where there's personnel, where you have to have a certain level of furniture and fixtures, if you want to have computers, the com- the community determined what a resource center was. I'm not that smart. You ask me about eyes, I can tell you about eyes, but when it comes to a resource center, the community determined what that was, and there's a price tag associated with that. You gotta have a full-time person there, you have to have a primetime person there, you have to have things to run an efficient organization, and so at the mayor's behest and through some negotiations, said, "Well, look, James, you're doing work over there, why don't you manage it?" And reluctantly, I said, "Well, I really don't wanna manage that," but, uh, I'm engaged with the community, and I think that we can do some good stuff. We have attorneys, we have accountants, and we can be a fiscal agent so that when money comes in, it can be utilized according to the contract that you gave, and then I certainly signed off on and put, uh, uh, a budget toward. And every dollar will be accountable, that it goes to you guys to see it and watch it. And, but when the contract wasn't paid for, it was supposed to start July one, we're now three months into the contract. The house is sitting there, and the conversation became, "Well, you know, was Dr. Beverly gonna get paid? I'm not gonna get paid." So to Mr. Jones and to those folk who think that I'm getting paid off of that, it's actually going to the Community Enhancement Authority as a management opportunity, uh, ten percent, eight hundred dollars a month to actually keep us going. Now, it is extremely important for this community to make a decision, and so if you say, "Okay, why would we terminate it?" Well, because of lack of payment. Let's be very clear about that. We're not walking away from the house just because they breached the contract for lack of payment over three months. That's the termination, was written in the agreement. Now, under certain circumstances, if you honor what we said on paper, then we would reconsider it. And we reconsider it and let the community decide what that resource center is, but I don't think you should nickel and dime it. It shouldn't be ten thousand bucks or fifteen thousand bucks or whatever it is, because it really is about what Pleasant Hill Neighborhood Improvement Group decided, what Georgia DOT decided, what the Federal Highway System said they would do by moving that house and keeping it open as a resource center. So, and I think there are implications by not doing it that go well beyond this conversation tonight. And I mean well beyond this conversation tonight. So, uh, are there circumstances, I was asked, are there circumstances where we would get involved? There are, but let's hash that out. Uh, and so, yeah, whatever the will of the body is, I will respect it as a citizen, not as a state representative, not as anyone but a citizen, I'll respect the will of this body to decide what you do with this contract. But let me be extremely clear, extremely clear, is that I am open to have a conversation that would say, "Here's what we're gonna do moving forward, and here's what our ongoing concern is gonna be, and we should not nickel and dime it," so I'm not interested in going back on the number. Um, and if you want someone else to do that, then by all means, uh, y'all should get some other place to manage it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Beverly. We appreciate you being here, and, and thank you very much for your efforts with the Community Enhancement Authority. Next item on our agenda, uh, are reports from our standing committees, um, and the first committee is our Operations and Finance Committee, and, uh, that report will be given to us by Chairman Watkins. Chairman Watkins?
Thank you, sir. The Operations and Finance Committee met on September the eleventh, twenty eighteen, and took the following actions. The committee approved the Title VI, VII, and Limited English Proficiency, as well as the American with Disability Acts Policies and Plans. The committee also approved the Five-Year Short-Term Work Program and Capital Improvement Element Update. The committee approved an agreement with White Way Development Doing Business as Appling Brothers for the installation of a filter blanket from the Macon Levy in the amount of eight hundred forty-four thousand, four hundred and forty dollars. The committee approved a settlement with, of a claim by Mindy Walker for damages for trespassing on her property in the amount of eighteen thousand, five hundred dollars. The committee approved an agreement with Correct Health for Medical and Mental Health Services for inmates in the amount of three million, nine hundred, four, nine hundred forty-five thousand, eight hundred and one dollars. The committee approved a cost-benefit analysis to decrease the operations and early closure of the landfill. The committee approved a new chapter of the Code of Ordinances, which addresses short-term vacation rentals. The following SPOLOX projects were approved at appropriations of eight hundred sixty-one thousand, four hundred and twenty-one dollars for Smart Lake Park Improvements, a contract with WLS Construction for two-point-two million dollars for Phase Two of Freedom Park Renovation. The following items were approved for the Employee Healthcare and Benefits Package, a contract with Plan Source Benefits to conduct benefits enrollment, benefits management in the amount of eighty-one thousand, eight hundred ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents. A contract with Standard Insurance Company to provide long-term disability, a contract with MetLife Insurance for life insurance coverage, and a contract with Blue Cross Blue Shield Health Plan of Georgia to provide dental, vision, and health insurance coverage for Macon Bibb County employees. The following items were approved using BLIT bond funds. The funding of the West Macon Bibb Field Improvements in the amount of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars from District Three, Six, and Seven BLIT funds, and two hundred and eight thousand dollars from SPOLOX proceeds. A project for Wise Avenue in agreement with Musco Sports Lighting in the amount of ninety-nine thousand. A project on Edgewood Avenue and Tail Fair Street in the amount of forty thousand from District Two proceeds, and the committee approved a transfer of funds in the amount of six thousand dollars for the Macon IT Department, and committee approved an establishment of furlough policies related to the FY nineteen budget, which is not on today's agenda, and this conclude, concludes the report of Operations and Finance.
Uh, thank you, Chairman Watkins. Uh, next report is Economic and Community Development, and, and that report will be given to us, uh, by Vice Chairman Nguyen. Vice Chairman Nguyen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Economic and Community Development Committee met on September the eleventh, two thousand eighteen, and the, and took the following action. The committee approved the following appointment. Sylvia McGee to the Board of the Bibb County Department of Family and Children's Services. The committee approved the BLIT consultant providing project management services to the BLIT mediation project of leadership Macon class of two thousand eighteen. This concludes the report of the Economic and Community Development Committee.
Uh, thank you, Vice Chairman Nguyen. Next is our Public Safety Committee, and that report will be given to us by Vice Chairman Lucas. Vice Chairman Lucas?
Thank you. Uh, this is the Public Safety Committee Report. Um, the chair of the committee is Scotty Shepherd, who is not with us tonight, he's ill. The Public Safety Committee met September eleventh, twenty eighteen, and took the following action. The committee accepted a grant from the Middle Georgia State University and the United States Department of Justice Project Safe Neighborhoods Program in the amount of one hundred fifty-eight thousand, ninety-four dollars with no local match to be used by the Bibb County Sheriff's Office for the purchase of a national integrated ballistics information network system, and to promote educational efforts aimed at reducing gun crimes and gang membership. This concludes the report of the Public Safety Committee.
Uh, thank you, Vice Chairman Lucas. Uh, finally, our Facilities and Engineering Committee, that report will be given to us by Chairman Jones. Chairman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Facilities and Engineering met as well September the eleventh. Excuse me, one item. The committee approved the conveyance from GDOT to Macon Bibb County of two hundred and forty-five acres located on the west bank of the Upmoggi River to provide for the Upmoggi Heritage Trail Extension. This was given to Macon Bibb County at no cost, and that completes the report. Facilities and Engineering.
Thank you, Chairman Jones. Um, that leads us to, next item on our agenda, which is the Consent Agenda, and there are no items on the Consent Agenda for tonight, no alcohol license request, which typically fall under this category, but that moves us on to Old Business, and, uh, the first item of, of Old Business, uh, is a, a resolution to execute the Fourth Amendment, uh, to the contract with Advanced Disposal Services for solid waste disposals, uh, here in Macon Bibb County, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute the Fourth Amendment to the agreement between Macon Bibb County and Advanced Disposal Services Macon LLC to maintain the current base rate and to provide for three scope-of-work rate adjustments for a new unit rate total of twelve dollars and three cents per month and for other purposes.
The committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Uh, Mayor Protem Tillman, got you first, sir.
Yes, sir, uh, Mr. Mayor. I don't actually have a, uh, an issue, uh, with supporting this. What my concern is, is that I was, just wanna make sure that we, uh, protect and ensure, uh, those jobs of those, uh, men and women already at, at solid waste. Uh, so I would like to offer an amendment that, um, will simply ensure that all solid waste jobs are kept, and I actually have it written, uh, Judd, and I'll read, uh, it says, "All workers will keep their same pay and years of service," uh, "to include recycling and other positions. Macon Bibb Government will not disband any solid waste positions without approval of the commission," and I offered that amendment.
Got a motion in second. I'm not quite sure that it's germane, because basically, speaking, this is the contract with advanced disposal, and, and would take no action, uh, to in-house employees to our solid waste disposal, public works at all. I mean, it wouldn't, it wouldn't affect them, and any, any action to do that would require...
I, I just think it's been, um, conversations behind the scene that this will possibly, my understanding, uh, and you tell me, if this does not do that, will take away, um, recycling jobs from those already in place at solid waste. Then if that does not do that, then, you know, I just wanna make sure that those jobs will be protected and secured, that this does not, uh, cause anyone to, uh, lose their job and anyone that's not laid off for this action.
Do you have, do you have your amendment?
I do.
Would you turn, pass it down this way, please? Would you see if that's in order, please, sir?
Uh, it is in writing, we could add this as a whereas provisions to the resolution. Whereas, uh, the commission ensures that all solid waste jobs are kept and are safe, all workers will keep their same pay in years of service to include recycling and other positions, uh, whereas Macon McCangert will not disband any solid waste positions without approval of the commission.
Uh, so, there is a motion by Mayor Protem Tillman to make that amendment, and a second, uh, by Chairman Watkins. Um, is there further discussion on that amendment? Commissioner Nguyen, did you wanna discuss the, the amendment?
Since it's out there, let me go ahead and make a comment. Macon Bibb County is not a guarantor of jobs if jobs are lost for whatever reason, or positions are lost for whatever reason, that we can't always guarantee that someone's gonna have a job within the city. So I don't think that's something we should need to add to this, this resolution.
Uh, Commissioner Jones, I got you next, sir.
Well, I wanted to speak on the Fourth Amendment itself. You ready for that?
Technically, this, we're still on the amendment, so if we can, if I can come back to you, or, or you can just go ahead at this point.
What I would say on that, the Fourth Amendment we're discussing actually talks about, it stipulates they're gonna add five jobs, so it's kind of a moot point. I'm not in favor of passing that, that, that amendment because, uh, this Fourth Amendment calls to add five jobs, so...
Okay. Um, Commissioner Watkins?
If, if you wouldn't mind just explaining to the body as me as well, how, what is your intent in terms of administering this change? I, I, I do understand Commissioner Tillman's point that the Recreation Department currently houses twelve, approximately twelve, uh, positions. So what is, absent this resolution, what is your plan moving forward? 'Cause we are, I guess, this, this contract contemplate a, advanced disposal taking over recycling, so...
My, my impression is that, that, the employees of the solid waste disposal who have been picking up, uh, recycling would now be reassigned, uh, to pick up using the same truck bulk waste, because what we're doing under this contract amendment is we're telling Advanced Disposal to pick up the garbage cart and the recycling cart, and we pick up everything else. So we're gonna have to use those people to go out and pick up bulk waste, yard clippings, illegal dumping, this, that, or the other, so that, that, that's my understanding of, of what we're doing.
And I guess to Commissioner Jones's point that of the twelve people that work in recycling, there are at least five positions already needed that they could possibly fill, if not more? Is that, or are you saying that that, that whole group would be repurposed to bulk waste, I guess, including their vehicles?
That's my understanding, and I wish Kevin Barkley or even Dr. Moffett were here to, to elaborate on that, but that's my understanding, that nobody's gonna lose the job with this. We need, we need every one we've got down there, we, they'd just be reassigned to a different task. Commissioner Lucas, did I have you next? Okay?
Yes, thank you. Um, I certainly support, um, uh, what the Mayor Protem is proposing, however, I don't think the votes are there to add it as an amendment, so I would like to request maybe that the sponsor, uh, withdraw that amendment and ask the legal department to draft a separate one that could be sent to committee, uh, as a discussion, uh, item when we meet, uh, next week, 'cause I don't want anything to get in the way of us going ahead and straightening out this part of the garbage mess that we can straighten out tonight, and I certainly am in favor of, uh, making sure that those folks who, uh, do the hardest work for the, the lowest pay, that they are not just, uh, you know, kicked aside, pushed to the side. But I think we need to do that as a separate item, uh, and I will be glad to co-sponsor if you would do that, 'cause it's obvious that you're not gonna get the votes to add it, um, uh, to approve that as an amendment.
Thank you. Commissioner Lucas, back to you, Mayor Protem.
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, thank you, uh, for that, uh, colleagues, and, uh, you're, you're absolutely, uh, right, uh, but I think what, part of what we wanna ensure is that we have something in writing or stating to those young men and women in that department to ensure they have the job. Now, I've just heard the administration say that they, uh, no one will, and, and lose their job, but I will withdraw this, uh, amendment and, uh, ask the, uh, county attorney to, uh, draw up a separate one as we move forward to ensure that process is in place.
Mr. Watkins, I assume that meets with your approval, you withdraw your second. Okay? Uh, the, the, the amendment is withdrawn, uh, that brings us back to the main motion, uh, now. Commissioner Jones, got you for discussion on the main motion?
Yes, sir.
Which is the Fourth Amendment itself.
We've had discussions about this, this, uh, contract is not... We've had discussions about this. This contract does not solve the problem. And we've all discussed, and the public needs to know, we've got 11 trucks that are not operational. We've got, those are 2003 or older. We have one heavy equipment operator to drive a, what's called a knuckle boom truck, that would pick up piles of debris all over Macon-Bibb County. And they're, they're all over. They're north, south, east, west. And the public has been living with that for a long, long time. The proposal that I liked better was one that gave it, gave it all to ADS, except for the business downtown, the special events, the dead animals on the road, the things like sofas and that sort of thing, toilets that people put out. So this one doesn't solve the problem, as I've stated before. It doesn't solve the problem for the public. In the agreement, in this contract, it says, "The contractor agrees to discontinue weekly", this is the contractor being advanced disposal, "discontinue weekly bulk waste and yard waste collective service, and instead provide recycling collection services." That's effective October 1st. October 1st, we're not, and I've traded emails with Kevin Barclay today, and he reports that the HEO, the Heavy Equipment Operator vacant positions have been posted for applicants to apply. Vehicular maintenance is working on rear loader trucks to make repairs. Vehicular maintenance has serviced the fluids and filters on the rear loaders. Brake service on the rear loaders has also been addressed. Sam Hugley is confident that 10 rear loaders and three boom trucks will be ready to go on October 1st. The rest of the fleet is to be by the end of October 2018. Once the resolution passes, the PR campaign will be developed. Well, we don't have the people. It's going to take time to hire the people. It's going to, these 11 trucks need major repairs, not just changing the oil and filter. And we're not, not in, it's really, to me, it's a perfect time to let ADS do more than what they were doing. We have, as we've discussed, 19 vacancies in public works. We have nine vacancies in parks and beautification. No one needs to lose their job. And I'm not in favor of this plan because mainly it doesn't solve the problem. These piles are going to remain there for months and months and months. And even if they got started in 60 days, those piles continue to grow, and we don't solve the problem. So I would vote against it because it doesn't solve the problem for the public. And the monthly fee, by the way, is $20 a month, not 30, as was stated earlier. So this would be at 17 and a quarter.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Nguyen, got you next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I also reiterate what Commissioner Jones has just said. This contract is not going to get us to where we want to go as soon as we want to be there. The community is, probably the most prevalent communication I get from my constituents is the trash and the yard debris that's still sitting out there. I rode through another neighborhood that I don't normally go through the other day, and it was just like Hurricane Florence had been through there, and stacked stuff on top of Hurricane Irma. There were stacks and stacks and stacks of yard debris. And with equipment and the lack of equipment, the lack of personnel we currently have to handle the yard debris, I don't see how it'll ever be caught up this year. And we'll continue to have those complaints, and we'll continue to have additional issues with weather that's going to cause more debris to occur. I just don't think this contract was the right one. I think that we should have gone with ADS handling everything. It would have started almost, well, October the 1st. He has the equipment and the personnel to do this and to keep our constituents happy because they're paying $20 a month for this, and it's not being done correctly. So I'm not in favor of this current contract.
Let me take a point of personal privilege. I've got three people still waiting, but let me make one comment that's becoming painfully obvious. We need to make a decision. And kicking this can down the road another two weeks is only going to keep the whole thing in limbo. If we try it and it doesn't work, then we can do something about it. I have, I have reason to believe that ADS is trying to work with us best they can, and may be willing, may be willing to continue during this transition period to try to pick up some of the yard debris, et cetera. But at least we've got a contract. They know what they've got to start ordering and getting, and we know what we've got to start ordering and getting. If we don't make a decision and just kick the can down the road, then I think we just are going to kick the can down the road. And ultimately, when we have a full complement, I think the votes are there to approve it. It's just a matter of kicking the can down the road and delaying for two weeks, which I hope we don't do. I hope we need to take some action and move forward. But again, that's just me and my point of personal privilege. Mayor Pro Tem Tillman, got you next, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I assure you that I think the commission is prepared to move forward with a vote tonight. And I support this. I have stated publicly, privately, that I do not think a lot of this was ADS's fault. But it is really amazing to me that the chairman of Facilities and Engineering have not spoken to one of the 43 employers at solid waste. That we continue to base our conversation off the department head, who has clearly misled this community, in my opinion. And that, you know, we went and did all this research and all this work to discredit giving $50,000 to clearly an outside agency in some eyes as Navisant Health. But you won't do your same due diligence and come and talk to the men and women of our own department to get their word and understanding. So with that, I have no issue with this. But I just think that you've got to do your due diligence and talk and communicate with everybody, especially if you're going to be a chairman of a committee and talk to those that want to communicate and talk to you. I think you have to do that. And so with that, I'll call for the vote.
As a motion to call the question, is there a second?
I withdraw that call for the question.
Okay. Mr. Watkins, got you next, sir.
So the plan that's on the table, I think it's been said, this is the Fourth Amendment to this contract. And one I'm actually in favor of, our county manager, the director of ADS, the director of our solid waste department, as well as our vehicle maintenance director, we asked them to come up with the best way to, and most cost-efficient way, to administer our solid waste services. And what they've come up with is that our internal department will pick up all bulk waste outside of the can, and ADS will pick up all waste that is containerized. And they associated a price of that. In order for us to do this, we needed to fix 11 trucks. And the whole time I've been hearing 11 trucks, I thought we had a total fleet meltdown, and we had hundreds of thousands of, if not millions of dollars worth of vehicle repair. But our vehicle maintenance department has told us that it's about $50,000 worth of repairs that need to be done. About $4,000 per truck. It's a brake line here, a belt here. And that's what we're doing. He said he could fix it. And I think you just read, Commissioner Jones, that he could fix it inside of a month, that our vehicles could be back operating. And if I'm understanding correctly, there are quite a few CDL drivers who currently work for the recycling division that would now or can be transitioned over to be CDL drivers for the bulk waste division. So the hiring isn't going to be too complex, if I'm understanding. And it seems as though the director and the county manager have confidence in their ability to hire and fill those slots. The, and that's what our subject matter experts are recommending that we vote on today. And that's going to cost us an extra, increase of 59 cents, which covers the cost of the cart. So that's the amendment, an extra 59 cents. What my fellow commissioners are trying to convince us is a better idea, is an idea to increase that by almost double because advanced disposal will then pick up everything. My problem with this is that we have fixed costs. Our fixed costs are locked in mainly to the landfill. The landfill cost us about $2.5 million to run. Those are our fixed costs, no matter who picks up the trash. And this $17.25 puts this operating at a negative. And I don't like that. It doesn't, we're trying, and I have, we're trying very hard to give away services that our employees are telling us that they can do to a contractor for a cost we can't afford. That is, we either, we either can amend the contract as we recommend today, or please let's send it back for more discussion. But I do agree with the mayor that you guys have done yeoman's work on providing us with a reasonable, cost-efficient solution to our problem. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Watkins. Commissioner Lucas, got you next.
Thank you. It's just amazing to me how quickly some people can move on animal issues. But they sit up and won't deal with this people issue that has been lingering with us for a long time. It's time for us to move on this. It is obvious with just, I'm assuming four votes to two tonight, that this would not pass, it looks like. And the same people who held all of these agencies that provide valuable services to this community, the same people who held these folks hostage, week after week after week, with their unreasonable request, are the same folks who are sitting up here tonight, trying to negotiate, which they should not be doing. We're the legislative body. We're not the negotiating team. We pass the laws and give the directions for the administration to carry out. But they are so upset that they can't be in charge of this until they're voting against it, just like they did the budget that held all of these children and old folks and library users hostage for so long. Y'all should, citizens should resent that. And you should say to these folks, you know, take yourself out of this and deal with an issue that has been pressing in this community, and that is garbage collection. Now, I'm prepared to vote for this tonight. But it looks like we're going to have to table it because we've heard two folks sitting up here saying that they want you to still have your problem with garbage. They're not ready to vote. We've got to be big girls and big boys, grown folks down here, and go ahead and deal with problems. And folks who just arrive on the scene seem to know everything about everything. They're the folks who say you can get volunteers and put them in Little Richard House over there and expect it to operate. That is ridiculous.
Commissioner Lucas.
It is ridiculous.
Commissioner Lucas, that's out of order. We don't attack fellow commissioners while we're here in the meeting.
I'm not. I haven't called anybody's name, but if the shoe fits...
No, ma'am. That, you know...
I am just about finished. We need to take care of this issue. It is past time. Past time. And I guess we're going to deal with it a little bit longer. But you can't sit up here and negotiate a contract. We've all got to look at the contract that's brought to us. And the one that's been put together is the best that I've seen so far. It allows for us to get your two recyclable contain, your recyclable container and your household stuff. Advance would get that. That's gone. Then our hardworking, underpaid department would then be responsible for the rest of it, ensuring that their jobs would still be in place, and that we would maintain at least some semblance of control over waste collection in this community. We've dealt with this long enough. And I am just so sad tonight that these obstructionists are sitting up here, holding this thing up again.
Commissioner Lucas.
Holding it up again.
Commissioner Lucas.
I'm through. Thank you.
As a reminder to all of us, and this is not directed to any one particular commissioner, but I'm going to ask the county attorney to read the rules that we adopted about meetings and decorum. Mr. Attorney?
Anyone who wants to speak must first be recognized by the presiding officer. All comments must be directed to the presiding officer and not to individual commissioners, staff, or others. All meeting attendees must conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Personal attacks and derogatory inappropriate remarks are not permitted. There shall be no use of profanity during the meeting.
Use profanity.
I didn't, I just, all of us need to take a deep breath. I mean, we're all of us trying to do what's right. Commissioner Jones, I got you next, sir.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Certainly, our employees are most valuable assets. The charter tells us that we cannot speak directly to employees to address matters. We can talk to department heads, and that's what we're allowed to do. To dispel that point, this, we have a huge problem with yard debris all over Macon-Bibb County. My problem with this Fourth Amendment, it doesn't solve the problem. With this very aged fleet, in my view, we need to buy four new trucks. That's $250,000 apiece, or a million dollars, easy math. We don't have that money. And it calls for adding five new employees, supposedly in the budget. But that adds five new people to the pension plan as well. To me, it's just a golden opportunity to maintain our solid waste department. If we needed to move some people to parks and beautification or public works at the same pay and the same benefits, then that opportunity would be there. But this Fourth Amendment does, in fact, kick the can down the road because it doesn't solve the problem. It does not solve the problem. If they were lucky to begin by end of October, there's no tell, I don't know that you'd ever catch up. And there was nobody on the street as of Monday. ADS also, in their proposal, would put two grapple trucks on the street, would have been last Monday or yesterday, and begin picking up all these piles. But they're all over, north, south, east, west. They're all over Macon-Bibb County. This amendment does not solve the problem. I want a resolution to the problem. It does, in fact, kick it, kick the can down the road. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I yield back.
Thank you. Commissioner Schlesinger, got you next, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What we have to do, and I think what's our most important goal as a commission moving forward, is to live within our means. If we live within our means, we will have the first balanced budget since consolidation. I think that should be our goal for the year. The proposal that's in front of us that is not going to pass tonight, obviously, is, enables us to live within our means. If we, you know, talk about paying advance $17.25 a month per household, we are going over budget. And you don't solve the problem by going over budget. You solve one problem, but you create another, and that's not a good trade-off, I think, in anybody's, you know, definition. So this resolution may not be perfect. It does, I think, effectively address the situation that we have. I don't know that, that, you know, when it comes to garbage and illegal dumping, you can, you can ever, you know, really solve the problem. But it does enable us to live within our means, and it does enable us to move forward toward our goal of a balanced budget. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioner Schlesinger...
Commissioner Schlesinger, Commissioner Wynn, got you next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will try to make this succinct and less rambling with unrelated and unprofessional attacks on each other here. I want to say that this, as, as Commissioner Jones has referred to, this, this contract doesn't go far enough for us. If we had the, the personnel and the equipment to pick up the yard waste, the yard debris, then it would've been being done. Right now, ADS is handling part of that, and won't be after the first of the month. And the city was only handling part of it, going behind ADS and picking up the remainder of the yard debris. They weren't doing it. They couldn't handle it, as small an amount as that was. We were still having to rely on ADS to try to do everything. People complained to me that, that ADS would come along and pick up two cubic yards of yard debris, which is what their contract said they should do. And that the city was not coming behind them to pick it up. We don't take care of it right now, and I don't see it happening anytime soon with, even with the repairs to the vehicles and hiring of personnel, which you never know how quickly that's gonna be done. I don't see this problem being taken care of by the end of October, by the end of the year. I think it's gonna be a continuing problem for us. I think a better solution may have been to just say to ADS, while we get our equipment and our personnel in order to handle this from here on out, that we'll let you continue to do some of this for the next three months, maybe to the end of the year, and let us get us, get the city employees and the city equipment back on track and get them where they can do it properly. Right now, it's not gonna be handled properly, and yes, it is kicking the problem down the road. We will continue to have complaints. I'll make sure that my fellow commissioners and the mayor will get those emails that I receive as complaints. I'll send copies to you to hear what's been said.
Thank you, Commissioner Wynn. Mayor Proton, Tim?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. For anyone that disagrees with the current legislation, if you want to offer an amendment for, that we reevaluate this for the next six months, I'll be glad to support it if you're gonna support this piece of legislation. And then the question to the attorney, my understanding is that commissioners cannot direct employees to do anything that, that comes directly from the administration and/or the department heads. But any commissioner can have a conversation, meet, and talk to employees. And so, if that is a misunderstanding as a chairman of any committee, I think we ought to correct that and make sure, you know, we get a cor, a copy and, and make sure that that's clearly understood. Because as a committee chair of any department, you want to be able to assess your committee and understanding by communicating to those that work for Macon-Bibb County. And so, if that, if I'm, if I'm incorrect in that, then let me know. But I would think that any commissioner can communicate and have a conversation with city employees.
We'll get clarification on that. Thank you. Commissioner Watkins, got you next, and one more waiting.
So, there is a written plan right now that I, that, again, that our department heads have created. And I believe you read a portion of it. And it's saying that we can fix our, repair our fleet for approximately fifty thousand dollars. I don't, I don't disagree that it is an old and aging fleet, and moving forward, we should be investing in our capital. But in the short term, inside of October, which is less than a month away, the majority of our fleet can be back on the road and working, in-house, for less than a hundred thousand dollars, is the option that is on the table for us to vote on today. Certainly, in coming years, we need to invest in new vehicles to keep it relevant to actually efficient. A lot of those trucks, I think, will be requiring three-man vehicles, and they're not energy efficient. And speaking of energy efficiency, just like we bought the buses with like an eco-friendly grant, where we only put up like ten percent of it, and the government paid the remaining ninety because they were environmentally friendly. Same thing exists in this space. So, and we also have the capital lease pool that makes the cost of trucks spread out over time. I say that to say that we need to invest in our capital, and that's true. But that is not immediately needed to get our vehicles running and get this operation back up. And if we're saying that we don't trust our subject matter experts or our department heads to do what they say they're gonna do or to be on schedule that they, they laid out, that's a different conversation. But right now, they have a plan that they seem quite interested in working. And let's give our guys a chance before we go privatizing it and doing something that we can't go back on. It's, it's easy to go up on the cost with our contractor. It will be very hard to go back down. I, I think it's time to move forward, and I yield my time.
Thank you, Commissioner Watkins. Commissioner Lucas, got you for one final comment.
Yes, I would reluctantly like to move to send this back to the appropriate committee.
That would be a, a motion, motion and second to, to, to table this and refer it back to the, believe it or not, Committee of the Whole, which is where it came from. So, the motion, the motion would be to, to table it and refer it back. All those in favor of tabling, referring back to the Committee of the Whole would say aye. Those opposed to that would, would vote no. So, all those in favor of tabling and referring back to the Committee of the Whole signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. That was one, one no from Commissioner Watkins? No, Commissioner, Mayor Proton? What? Tim, okay. So, the, the motion carries, it's tabled and referred back to the Committee of the Whole. So, it'll be on the agenda for the Committee of the Whole next Tuesday morning, when we go back to that. All right, that brings us to item B, which is a, a resolution concerning the, the cancellation or termination of the contract with the, the Community Enhancement Authority for, for management of the Little Richard House. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute the termination of the intergovernmental agreement related to Macon-Bibb County's lease of the Little Richard House to the Macon-Bibb County Community Enhancement Authority and for other lawful purposes.
The Committee of the Whole recommend, recommended approval of this. So, those of you who want to see this agreement canceled, which would basically eliminate the agreement itself, that, that was there, terminate that, that agreement, would vote yes. If you are against that and do not want to terminate it, you'd vote no. So, if you vote not to terminate the agreement, then it's still in existence, and I suppose could be amended, modified. Right, okay, it could be amended or modified. Because what, the, the resolution says terminate it. It's given me the authority and direction to terminate the contract. So, if we don't want to do that, you'd vote no. Right? You just would vote no, don't terminate it. And that way, we haven't terminated, we haven't taken any official action. That's the way I think we ought to be looking at this. So, let me see, okay, Commissioner Lucas, did you want to address this?
I, I wanted to.
I want to get that in the recording. I, I cleared you up. Is that what you said?
This time. Only.
Fair enough, fair enough, all right.
I wanted to.
Okay. Commissioner Watkins?
So, we are in breach of contract. The county is in breach of contract as it relates to fulfilling this obligation. We told an organization, we committed, we signed the contract. We voted and approved, even though it was contentious. We voted and approved to pay eight thousand dollars a month.
Correct.
We haven't done it. And right now, it seems as though we have no intention to pay it. And I think that's just wrong. I mean, we, we are in a relationship with not only the state government in this instance. I'm sorry, what's, what's up?
Sir? So, so, if you don't, I mean, there, there is a, a technical difference from a legal standpoint, and I really ought to just refer, you're right, really ought to just refer this to, to judge, but between being in violation or breach of the contract, that can be cured. That can be cured upon agreement by the party. But if you terminate the contract, if you vote to terminate it, then, then we've gotta go back and start over and renegotiate.
So, currently, currently, we have not terminated this contract.
Currently, we have not. That's what this resolution would do.
And right now, my biggest concern is we have an obligation. It is not a relationship between us and just the federal government or the state government. On three levels of government, Macon-Bibb County, the state, and the federal government decided that we want to build an interstate or amend our interstate route, and that would affect the Pleasant Hill community. So, the governments agreed with the Pleasant Hill community on a mitigation plan, and that concluded, included, one of the biggest pieces of it was a community resource center, that we would maintain it. We can argue about what maintain is, but we signed a contract that said that that was forty hours a week, that that was internet access, that that was job participation program. That's what we signed, and that's what we are attempting to terminate today. But termination today does not end the conversation because we are obligated to provide services to the Pleasant Hill community, to the level that the Pleasant Hill community is satisfied. Because we have signed several times, not just intergovernmental with the Community Enhancement Authority, we signed documents with the state saying that we would maintain this. The state used those documents that we would maintain those houses and those parks to get money from the federal government to improve, make those I-16, I-75 improvements. If we decide that we're gonna breach this contract and not do and not satisfy our community, we have an ongoing interstate project that's without funding and held up in court, and it gets very interesting. Today, I'm asking that we table this docu, we table this item and have a decent conversation with the parties involved, the community, on how we move forward.
There's a motion to table, is there a second? Got a motion and a, a second to, to, to table. That's non, non-debatable. So, all those in favor of tabling this, sending it back to the committee from which it came, which is Committee of the Whole, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the issue is, resolution is tabled and referred back to the Committee of the Whole. That brings us to item C, which is the acceptance of two-hundred-and-forty-five acres from the Georgia Department of Transportation. And I'll ask clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to accept the conveyance from the Georgia Department of Transportation of two-hundred-and-forty-five point one-five acres located along the west bank of the Oatmuggie River to provide for the Oatmuggie Heritage Trail Extension and for other purposes.
The Facilities and Engineering Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Schlesinger?
No, that was from the previous issue.
All right, sir. Commissioner Wynn?
Aye.
Okay. Commissioner Jones?
Mine was previous to.
All right. So, no, no discussion here. All in favor of the resolution to accept two-hundred-and-forty-five acres from the Georgia Department of Transportation signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Item D is a grant from the United States Department of Justice for safe neighborhoods with no local match, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the acceptance of a grant from the Middle Georgia State University and the United States Department of Justice, Project Safe Neighborhoods Program in the amount of a hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand and ninety-four dollars with no local match to be used by the Bibb County Sheriff's Office for the purchase of a national integrated ballistic information network system and to promote educational efforts aimed at reducing gun crimes and gang membership and for other lawful purposes.
Public Safety Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution to, to make an appointment to the Bibb County Department of Family and Children's Services, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission reappointing Sylvia W. McGee to the Board of the Bibb County Department of Family and Children's Services and for other purposes.
Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution to authorize our BRIGHT consultant to provide project management services to Leadership Macon in their project for 2018, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize and direct the BRIGHT consultant to provide project management services related to the BRIGHT remediation project of the Leadership Macon class of 2018 and for other purposes.
The Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is a, a resolution to adopt a Title VI compliance policy, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission adopting a Title VI compliance policy and plan and other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Item H is a resolution to adopt a Title VII compliance policy. I'll ask clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission adopting a Title VII compliance policy and plan and other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Lucas?
Yes, would, would the county attorney just please state what title? We've, we've discussed this, but I think for the information of those listening, if he would explain just very, real briefly what those two.
Well, since Senior Assistant County Attorney Crystal Jones is here, I'm gonna let her give a brief overview.
Gotcha. Crystal, can you?
These are just very important.
Come, join us at the podium, please.
Items.
Ms. Jones is our compliance officer as well, and she drafted these.
Title VI deals with discrimination with regard to services that are provided to the public. So, if a member of the public, for example, felt that they were discriminated against or that they had issues with receiving services for some reason with some of the, the things that we offer to the general public, then they could file a Title VI complaint so that could be investigated. And if an issue was determined, it could be addressed and resolved. Title VII is, in, it refers to the fact that we do not discriminate with regard to our employees. So, if an employee feels like they may have been subject to discrimination, sexual harassment, they can have the alternative of filing a complaint internally so an investigation can be completed, and if something is found to be an issue, it can be resolved. Or there may not be an issue filed, it just, it just pans. And it just gives them an internal method they can use as opposed to an EEOC complaint if they choose to do so.
Ms. Jones, while you're there, just in case a question comes up, English proficiency policy, which is next on our agenda?
The limited English proficiency policy ensures that we are not discriminating against individuals who have a limited ability to speak, read, or understand English. And with that policy, what happens is, for example, our court system often is the one that has to use that service. If you have someone who has to appear at a hearing or a trial and they don't speak English, that's not their first language. We retain the services of a translator. Sometimes you may have members of the public that come in, and they have questions about services that we may offer here at the Government Center, and they may not have English as a first language. And what we can do is often get an interpreter over the, an interpreter over the phone to assist in explaining what this is to them in their native language.
And finally, item J is Americans with Disabilities Act Transition Plan.
The Americans with Disabilities Act actually is also tied into Title VII and Title VI because that's also seen as an area of possible discrimination. But this particular Americans with Disabilities Act Transition Plan is something that's required on. with Disability Act Transition Plan is something that's required on an annual basis by the Georgia D dot G, G dot Georgia DOT, and what it does is it provides the policy and procedure that we use to address whether or not our facilities are or are not ADA compliant. If they are not ADA compliant and they don't fall under exception, what we may be doing to try and get that issue resolved. If it does fall under exception, it doesn't have to be brought up to date, that's also listed.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Further question, Ms. Jones, about any of these items? If not, we were, we were discussing Title VII in our compliance policy. Is there further discussion on item H, the resolution adopting the Title VII compliance policy? Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Without further discussion, all in favor of adopting the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. The resolution adopting the Limited English Proficiency Policy and Plan, I'll ask clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission adopting a Limited English Proficiency Policy and Plan, and for the other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Item J is the resolution to adopt Americans with Disabilities Act Transition Plan, and I'll ask clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to adopt an Americans with Disability Act Transition Plan in substantially the same form as attached hereto as Exhibit A, and for other purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. Ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Item K is a five-year short-term work program for capital improvements, and I'll ask clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission approving and adopting the Macon-Bibb County Five-Year Short-Term Work Program and Capital Improvements Element Update, and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Item L is a, a resolution to approve a contract with Aplin Brothers for some work on the levee, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with White Way Development Corporation doing business as Aplin Brothers Company for the installation of a filter blanket to repair seepage problems along the Macon levee in the amount of eight hundred and forty-four thousand four hundred and forty dollars payable from contract services for FY nineteen, and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Item M is a settlement of a trespass claim, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize settlement in the amount of eighteen thousand five hundred dollars related to the claims of Iris Mindy Walker for damages for trespass to real property known as 2017 Walker Swamp Road, Macon-Bibb County, Georgia, and for the removal of dirt from said property, and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution to provide for health, physical health and mental health services at the LEC, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to an agreement with Correct Health Be of LLC in the amount of approximately three million nine hundred and forty-five thousand eight hundred and one dollars and fifteen cents payable from the Sheriff's Office Correction Budget, Medical Services and Mental Health Services line items, to continue to provide medical and mental health services for inmates of Macon-Bibb County and the Bibb County Sheriff's Office from July the first, two thousand and eighteen, through July thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen, and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. And next is a resolution to request the county manager to do a cost-benefit analysis on our solid waste landfill, and I'll ask clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to request that the county manager provide a cost-benefit analysis for review by the commission related to decreasing the operations of Macon-Bibb County Solid Waste Landfield to the minimum level required by state law, and a cost-benefit analysis related to the early closure of Macon-Bibb County Solid Waste Landfield, and for other purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Item P is a new section to our Code of Ordinances concerning short-term vacation rentals, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to add a new division to the inaugural Code of Ordinances for Macon-Bibb County, being Division fourteen point five of Article Two of Chapter Seven, related to regulations of short-term vacation rentals by implementing procedures for the registration and licensing of STVRS, and to provide for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Jones, I've got you first, sir.
Yes, sir. I, I think this, and I know Commissioner Watkins put a lot of work into it, and I respect that, but it's just an overreach of government. I just don't think we need to be in, I think it's a violation of property, private property rights, and I just think it's an overreach of government. Somebody who rents out their place a, a night or two at a time, and sometimes it's to family, sometimes it's to, maybe not to family, but to people that are here for a tennis tournament for two nights, and I just don't think they need to be paying hotel motel tax. So I have a problem with that one, and I'll vote no.
Okay. Commissioner Watkins, I've got you next, sir.
So, few years ago, the Airbnb homestay and technology did not exist. Our code needs to reflect, this is a business-type activity. There are some owner-occupants that rent out a room, they give a family an invoice, and they pay for the service that's provided. It's a business-type activity. What I'm requesting that, and in some instances, people are buying homes for the whole purpose of subdividing it and having multiple Airbnbs, very similar to a bed and breakfast, which pays a hotel motel tax. We're asking that these businesses register for free outside of their business license. We categorize it appropriately because we need to categorize things appropriately, and they pay the appropriate associated tax associated. If you are renting a home for more than thirty days, it is considered a rental, and you're responsible for the rules that, that go along with renting your property. If it is for less than thirty days, I believe, and inside of ten days, it is considered a hotel stay. That is, those are the rules, whether or not it be a hotel with one room in it or three hundred rooms in it. They are conducting business, submitting invoices and being paid for services, and when that happens, governments are supposed to be paid. Hotel motel tax is the appropriate venue for this. We, as a government, we talk about sound, being sound, being fiscally responsible. Collecting debts owed is a part of being fiscally responsible. Making sure that we negotiate favorable contracts with private industry is fiscally responsible. And I, I, right now, even absent the thought of whether or not they pay a hotel motel tax, which I would argue they're supposed to, and they're supposed to be paying a business license fee too, which this isn't requesting. They are providing services to citizens, using a red herring, there could be bedbugs at said facility. And our health department has a right to our citizens to be able to know that this place is doing business in our community and be able to address it. That is what I'm asking for in this, that it definitely, extended stay vacation rentals definitely exist in the world. We can't put our head down in the sand and act like it doesn't exist. We owe, we owe our citizens a right of regulation and a right of classification. You've got, even in defense of these businesses, some of them, because you don't know what's happening, planning and zoning is doing interesting things, business license is doing interesting things, and so is the tax assessor. These things need to be categorized, that is what government does, and we receive fees for services when they're rendered, and that is a tax, that is what I'm requesting in this bill. But I'm understanding that it does not have the ability to pass, it needs more discussion, so I request that it be tabled.
I've got a, a motion to table by Commissioner Watkins, and second by Commissioner Nguyen? Second by Commissioner Nguyen. All in favor of tabling this signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. Ayes have it, this is tape, this is tabled until, and referred back to Operations and Finance would be... Commissioner Schlesinger?
Tonight is Yom Kippur, the day of tenebrosity on the Jewish calendar, and it starts at sundown, and that's about where we are. So I, so I need to leave to get to the synagogue for our eight o'clock service. If I do, you lose your quorum. So I would respectfully request that we address the items that are on the agenda now where there really is no discussion, they're important items regarding, you know, insurance here, and try to get through them as quickly as possible while the quorum still exists, and we can do business.
I, I, I will do my best, but there are several that are coming up, coming up next. Item Q is an ordinance to start the Smart Lake Project out off Houston Avenue. I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission approving and authorizing the appropriation of eight hundred and sixty-one thousand four hundred and twenty dollars from the two thousand and seventeen SPOLOX bond proceeds and our two thousand and eighteen SPOLOX revenues from two thousand and eighteen Cultural and Recreation Smart Lake Park line item as shown on the two thousand and eighteen SPOLOX project timeline and budget, and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the ordinance is adopted. Next is another SPOLOX, a project for Freedom Park, Phase Two, and I'll ask clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute a contract between Macon-Bibb County and WLS Construction Incorporated in the amount of two million two hundred and ninety-two thousand six hundred dollars for Phase Two of the Freedom Park renovation to be paid by two thousand and seventeen SPOLOX bond proceeds and two thousand and eighteen SPOLOX revenues, and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is Plan Source Benefits Administration to get us a software to do the enrollment for our healthcare plan, and I'll ask clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute a contract with Plan Source Benefits Administration, Inc., to conduct benefit enrollment and benefit management system services in the amount of eighty-one thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents for the first year to be paid from the Enrollment and Wellness Fund, and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Next is the first of four insurance company contracts for providing just different kinds of benefits. The first one's long-term disability with Standard Insurance Company. I'll ask clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute a contract with Standard Insurance Company to provide long-term disability coverage to Macon-Bibb County employees, and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is the health insurance for life insurance with MetLife. I'll ask clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute a contract with MetLife Insurance Company to provide life insurance coverage to Macon-Bibb County employees, and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Item V is the same thing, Blue Cross Blue Shield for dental and vision coverage. I'll ask clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute a contract with Blue Cross Blue Shield Healthcare Plan of Georgia, Inc., to provide dental and vision coverage to Macon-Bibb County employees, and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next, a contract with Blue Cross Blue Shield for healthcare. I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute a contract with Blue Cross Blue Shield Healthcare Plan of Georgia, Inc., to provide health insurance coverage to Macon-Bibb County employees, and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is an ordinance to appropriate three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of BLIT funds, plus two hundred and eight thousand dollars of SPOLOX bond funds for the West Macon baseball field improvements. I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to amend ordinance O-dash-eighteen-dash-oh-oh-three-oh to appropriate three hundred and fifty thousand of BLIT bond funds from District Three, Six, and Seven BLIT funds, plus two hundred and eight thousand eight hundred dollars and fifty-four cents in two thousand and seventeen SPOLOX bond rep funds, and our two thousand and eighteen SPOLOX revenues from the BLIT remediation BLIT bond number two line item for the funding of the West Macon baseball field improvements, and for other purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the ordinance is adopted. Next, item Y is a resolution for ninety-nine thousand dollars for lighting for the Wise Avenue multipurpose field, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Musco Sports Lighting LLC in the amount of ninety-nine thousand dollars for lighting to be installed at the multipurpose field on Wise Avenue to be paid by the two thousand and fifteen BLIT bond Wise Avenue Project Professional Services account, and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Item Z is an ordinance to appropriate forty thousand dollars in BLIT bond funds for the little Pocket Park at the corner of Elm Street and Telfair Street, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to appropriate an additional forty thousand dollars of BLIT bond funds from District Two for the Edgewood Avenue-Telfair Street BLIT project, and for other purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. Ayes have it, the ordinance is adopted. And finally, we got an ordinance to approve a budget amendment to the FY nineteen budget for transfer of funds in the amount of sixteen thousand dollars from IT services to pay for some other things. I'll ask clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to approve a budget amendment to the FY nineteen budget for the transfer of funds in the amount of sixteen thousand dollars from the Macon-Bibb County IT Department Repair and Maintenance Software License and Maintenance Line item to the Computer and Hardware Line item for the Radio System Microwave Project, and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the ordinance is adopted. The final item is item BB, which was a resolution to establish the county's furlough policy. That was tabled and pre-commissioned, and will be heard next Tuesday. That brings us now to our new business items, and we have lost our quorum. What do you do when you lose a quorum?
Section two dash two twenty-five of the Macon-Bibb County Code of Ordinances revised in subsection A as follows. The commission shall meet at six o'clock PM on the first and third Tuesdays each month, and such meetings shall be deemed to be regular meetings. Should any of the regular meeting dates fall on legal holidays, regular meetings which would otherwise have been held may be voted... would otherwise have been held, may move on to the pertinent part. If at any time there shall not be a quorum present at a meeting, those present shall adjourn until the next regular meeting in the matters which would otherwise have been disposed of at such meeting which lacks a quorum shall be taken up and disposed of at the next regular meeting.
Therefore, I would ask the Commissioners to take note of the new business that appears in the agenda that I would have otherwise read so that it could be referred to Committee. Ladies and gentlemen, because we've lost a quorum, we have to stop now, we can't continue with further action. Items of new business, as well as items that were tabled tonight and referred back to Committee, will be heard beginning next Tuesday morning. That would be the 25th, I believe, at 9:00 AM in the Committee Meeting Room at 9:00 AM. Please check the agenda that will be published on Friday afternoon that will show additional items that may come down from the Attorney's Office during the week and will be taken up next Tuesday morning. With that, unfortunately, without a quorum, we are adjourned.